Meeting that is right before our recess. Welcome to the July fourteenth council meeting. If we could please rise, referring to, I have a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Mrs. Ross, mayor, please read the role.
Mr. Arnold, Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Here.
Ms. Gentry, Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Spetzl.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Liskovit.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold and Ms. Gentry had informed us they would not be at this meeting. Does anybody have an objection? Seeing none, then we will move on to the approval of the minutes. Now, if there are several minutes before us to be approved, we're going to approve them one at a time. Has everybody read the May fifth meeting minutes? Any changes? Okay, then in general consensus, they will remain as published. How about May twelve? Are there any changes or additions to May twelve? Seeing none, that in general consensus, they will remain as published. And the last one is May twenty seventh. Any changes or additions or deletions? Seeing none in general consensus, then they will remain as published. Thank you. Uh, in correspondence, does anybody have anything to report in correspondence? Yes, sir, Mr. Shamir.
Uh, yes, I've been in communication with a number of residents with respect to the implosion of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. And as such, uh, the question has been with respect to a secondary explosion that was associated with that implosion. Has there been a, uh, report received by the, by the city or prepared as the cause of that secondary implosion, an explosion associated with that implosion activity?
I have no knowledge of that. I'd love to hear more details.
Okay, in fact, if I can go to the, uh, presentation, I'll put it up there quickly.
You're live.
So, this is the image that was forwarded to me. And, uh, the question was asked, why was such a large charge utilized on during the implosion? Well, when you go back and look at what you've got out there, you see a number of different sequences. But typically, when you have such a large explosion, it's associated with flue gases or similar, so fly ash or anything else that may be in the stack as it blows and as it collapses with respect to the rest of the energetics that are ongoing on site. So, when I received the question, I looked at it, uh, and I sent it to few of my friends who are in the industry and asked them the question, is that the norm? And is that something that you would see in an implosion? Said, no, the charges are focused at the basis. And when you look at a similar incident, it typically is a secondary explosion that occurs. So, when you look at those photos, those are not charges that are utilized to bring down structures. What happens there is typically a secondary implosion. So, what I, what I, se- secondary explosion, so what I told residents and others is that I will look into it and, and bring out the question to council and to city. And when you look at that, I mean, this is an explosion. This is not an implosion. And I was wondering if the city has any data on the cause of such a large blast? And if that has, that was part of what happened with the, with the building across the street with the shattered glass? And furthermore, has there been structural integrity analysis done on the remaining, uh, stack? So, this is a question that was initially raised to me, and I've gone back and, and gone through a number of iterations. So, I'm putting that question back into the city and, and hopefully we can answer them. That is the, that is the question that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any response from the administration staff? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I can respond, uh, um, I don't want to speculate. I, I know that the fireball you see was a result of dust, fly ash, accumulation of a hundred years of, of things. They did wash down the entire building, but they knew that there's nooks and crannies where that could happen. Um, I'm not going to go beyond that because I'm not an expert in this, but I will find out answers for you. Um, I know that the broken window was a result of overpressure. I know that the, um, uh, seismograph readings were negligible. And I know that they have checked that tower, but I'll, I'll get your additional information.
And if we can get the root cause analysis done, I mean, if, if that was a failure because an implosion typically takes out structures and does not have any aftershocks or after blows, and if they've got a, if Dove, i- if they have completed the root cause analysis, if we can receive that, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I, I can tell you that they did have to use more explosives than, uh, anticipated. The steel was thicker. It was steel, uh, tool grade steel. So, they had to use more explosives than they would have otherwise. I do know that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further correspondence? Okay, um, I have received, uh, correspondence and, um, a number of emails, uh, that are in opposition to what we're hearing from the transferred residents. And these emails have come from, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Rhode on Westview Trail, uh, Mr. Blake, Landings Way, um, Mr. and Mrs. Spitzer, Southport Drive, um, Ms. Bra- Brady on Ballast Court, um, Mr. and Mrs. Naples on Hidden Cove, uh, Mr. Kennedy on Bridgeside Drive, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Scuggan on Southport Drive, uh, Mr. Beckman on Treeside Lane, uh, Mr. Ralston on Bridgeside Drive, um, Ms. Hardeman on Parkside Drive, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Geivel on Arbor Side Lane, and, um, Ms. Everson on Parkside Drive, and Ms., um, Ramsey on Treeside Lane. Um, Mrs. Ross, mayor, did you receive any additional?
Yes, I received, um, an email from Danielle Naples, uh, Lori Glenn, and Kim Orlowsky.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further correspondence from anyone? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to go to reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Um, on July third, we had a very successful Independence Day celebration with the fireworks. I understand it was the largest crowd in recent memory. It was a, a well, um, well-done show. Everybody behaved themselves, everybody was safe, so it was really good to see. I want to thank all our sponsors for the fireworks. Uh, without them, we would not have been able to put on that show. A huge thanks to our police, fire, public works, recreation departments, uh, for their efforts in planning and implementing, uh, the event and making it a safe and fun celebration for everybody. Uh, I also wanted to announce, uh, many of you probably know Mike Menino. Mike Menino is a staple here in Avon Lake when it comes to youth baseball. Mike is going to be throwing out the first pitch at the Guardians games on August twenty-sixth, and he's going to be recognized by them, which is great. I mean, I, I coached for many years and got to know Mike, super guy. Uh, he would know every kid's name. He would encourage every kid that came up to bat. He would encourage every pitcher, just a super guy. So, this is a well-deserved recognition, uh, for him. And I have one other is, uh, the National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey is coming to Lorain County. This is a survey that's done annually, and they pick, uh, locations throughout the United States. This year, it just happened to be Lorain County and Avon Lake. So, portions of Lorain County that include Avon Lake have been randomly selected for an upcoming, upcoming National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey. This is done annually. It will begin mid-July through September. Uh, randomly selected households will receive letters in the mail. You will not be getting a phone call or anything else, but you may receive a letter in the mail inviting them to participate. The participation would include a in-person visit and then the possibility of doing confidential physical exams. So, we just want to get that information out there. If you start hearing this or you see mailings, uh, you know that this is a, uh, done by the federal government. They've been doing it for about sixty years now. And again, they will contact you by U.S. mail. And this is part of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention work. Um, so I just want to make everybody wear that. And that will also be up on our, on our website with information if anybody needs anything further.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Okay, we're going to move on to the council president's report. So, tonight, we're going to be discussing again Chapter two-two-oh, which is the policy of city council. And, um, the next item I want to talk about is the ad hoc meeting for the boards and commission restructuring. They had their organizational meeting, they selected their chair, they selected the dates they're going to be meeting, and, um, they have been in contact with our staff through, uh, Mrs. Ross, mayor, and through, um, Ms. Bogans. Any questions about that particular, um, board? I should say that there are twelve boards and commissions. They're going to be working on eight of them. Four, they're not going to be touching because it has to do with the Ohio Revised Code or has to do with our charter. So, they're just going to be working on the ones that, um, are ordinances. What they're going to be looking at are two items. One would be to balance out the meritorial appointments with the council appointments. The other one is to make sure that the terms overlap, so they don't all end at the very same time. So, institutional knowledge can be shared, uh, with the next group that comes in. Any questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the next one. Um, the big tree contest, I, I want to talk about this because Avon Lake has until July the twenty-fifth to turn in where you know there is a large, uh, white pine. And there are prizes for our Avon Lakers. So, if the largest white pine that's turned in by an Avon Laker is four feet high, that'll be the winner. So, here are the prize sponsors. Salic Crays, Fenix, Dairy Queen, Parkers, um, and Old School. Um, in addition to that, if they really are large trees, and it ends up being the top three trees in the county, there are financial awards there. So, um, please go to the Soil and Water website and upload your photographs and apply. Thank you. Any questions about that one? Okay, um, and there's going to be a tree planting walking index study on August the twentieth, uh, this, this being run by the Ohio Department, uh, Division of Forestry. And three of the members of, I'm sorry, one, two, four of the members of the Tree Commission will be involved with it. So, if you see people along tree lines and they have a large rod and they have clipboards, they're there, they're looking at areas that trees could be, um, placed or could be replaced. Wanted to let everybody have a heads up. Um, the next topic I wanted to talk about real quickly has to do with, um, later on tonight, tonight, there's going to be suspension of the rules. As you can see, there's only five members up here. So, if something is going to be passed, um, tonight versus putting it off until, uh, the end of August, it would require all of us to vote forward on it. So, I encourage my council people to, when it comes to their committees, to explain what is going to be coming up, the suspension of the rule, and why it would be a suspension of the rule, so that everybody has input into that. Okay? Yes, sir?
Yes, uh, Madam President. In that regard, uh, it Planning Commission, uh, there was an item that came before us where, uh, uh, it's, uh, temporary leg- or it's ordinance number twenty-five dash one-thirty-five that at Planning Commission, I had, uh, advised that I owned a property in Smugglers Cove, uh, and that I had done some representation of Mr. Calibres in the past. And it was decided that, that I should abstain at that point. In regard to that matter, I, uh, I own a condominium in, in, uh, Smugglers Cove Association Number One, which is not attached to the one that's, this is, I think, Association Number Four. And, uh, my representation of Mr. Calibres was in the past, nothing at all to do with, with the, uh, the current, uh, matter that he has going on, that he has engineers and other council for. I just, uh, wanted, you know, wanted to know if, in fact, Mr. Ebert was of the same opinion still that a, uh, that a conflict existed, um, bef- before, uh, before we get to that item.
So, Mr. Ebert?
Vice President, Vice President, I'm sorry. Yes, I agree with Mr. Smith on the situation. He no longer has a conflict whatsoever on the issue concerning the vacation of the street.
Thank you.
Miss.
If I could, if I could send it out to council members for just a moment, Mr. Smith. Any further discussion from our council on this topic? Mr. Smith is back here.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I, I just want to know what the basis of that is, Mr. Ebert.
Basis, number one, you don't own the property in, in this area. Uh, number two, it's a vacation. It's not like anyone's going to benefit from that situation as far as other residents concerning that, that thing. And number three, you don't represent the, uh, the individual that you did back then anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for elaborating. Any further discussion? Anyone? Okay, that, that concludes the, uh, no, I have one more thing with my, uh, council report. So, the next time that we meet is going to be a double meeting. It's going to be August the twenty-fifth. We're going to have a collective committee meeting, and it's going to be followed by a council meeting, August the twenty-fifth. Any further discussion? Okay, now we will move on to the law director's report.
No report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. On to the finance director's report.
Yes, um, a couple of things to report. The twenty-twenty-three audit has been completed and released by the Auditor of State. Uh, final results were presented by the auditors to council. These financial statements will be placed on the website within the next week or so. And also, the twenty-twenty-four audit is underway, and hopefully will be a lot quicker.
Thank you. Any questions for our finance director? Seeing none, we're going to move on then to the public works director.
Difficult. Had it. All right. Uh, just to have a couple of items tonight. Um, I'd like to lead with, uh, Alps Phase Two construction. Uh, so contractor had mobilized in, uh, just, just right before the holiday. Um, did some preliminary setup work last week, and, uh, they're moving dirt this week, starting to strip the site, um, and move forward with that project. Um, I did meet, I happened to meet with the, uh, one of the members from their staff today onsite, um, and they're looking for equipment to start arriving in August, beginning of September, uh, which tracks with their schedule. So, that's moving forward, um, in, in a good positive, um, effort there. Um, just a update on our concrete streets program. Uh, Stony Brook is, uh, essentially ready for seed. Uh, there's, I believe, a couple of mailboxes that still need to be restored and a couple of street signs that need to be installed. Uh, but that has been all dressed up, cleaned up, and ready for seed there. And then the contractors, uh, started the day on Brunswick, um, with two crews, uh, doing underdrain and also backfilling and starting to work on the tree lawn grading. Um, they will be working within the, uh, setup, um, construction zone, um, in an effort to speed the process along and keep things moving as expeditiously as possible.
Okay, Mr. Alaskovik, I do have a question about Stony Brook. Um, since eighty-one degree and higher weather, um, is not the most suitable for grass growing, what is the plan for reseeding?
So, in- initially, they're still going to seed, uh, and then we'll watch to see what germinates and how that performs, and if we have to have them come back and address it again in the fall, we'll do that. But we'll hold account, uh, hold the contractor accountable for that.
And second question, are there, is there any, um, information for the residents? Are they supposed to be watering? Is there anything that they're supposed to be doing?
Abs- absolutely. I mean, I would, yeah, I mean, I would say that you treat it no different than if you did any repairs in your, your own yard, and, you know, once it's been sprayed, to make sure you're watering it, um, because it, it's crucial, obviously, for water to get it to germinate and start to take hold.
Thank you. And can you move over to Brunswick? Where are we on Brunswick?
Um, as I mentioned, they're doing underdrain, um, and grading on the tree lawns. They're starting, uh, in the existing, uh, lane closure on the south end, working towards the north, and then they'll flip and work their way back on the west side of the street.
Do you have a date of when, um, that will be changed? Because I, I, I imagine that Mr. Shamir's been receiving, um, phone calls. I know I have been receiving phone calls. Um, residents at the northern part want to know why it can't be opened up. Can you go into the explanation?
Sure. So, uh, contractor had spoke with, uh, with the city on that. Um, and their request was out of, A, out of safety, and B, out of the ability to move, as I said earlier, expeditiously through this, this part of the project. Um, it would be to everybody's advantage to keep that lane closed and work within that zone. Um, i- in the event that, say, we had opened up the whole street, uh, then you're going to have flaggers, you're going to need, it, it becomes, with this heavily traveled both directions of the, it becomes much more of a challenge to manage that. Um, so that was, that was the, the determination that was, um, made, that that would be in the best interest for everybody to get, to do that, to get everything done as quickly as possible.
I think the number one question on residents' mind is, when do you think it's going to be finished?
Well, considering we're looking at three days of rain this week, um, I, I, I would love to say we would be out of there before the end of the month, but again, it's all leather, weather-dependent.
So, we're scheduled scenario August fifteenth?
Yeah.
August tenth?
Sure. I, I wish, I wish I could just give you something, a little more concrete than that. I mean, I know they've given us original schedule, you know, that they're going to be done by the fourth.
Of July?
Yep, and we've come and passed that, so.
They're watching, residents are watching on this particular one.
Understood.
And I know Mr. Shamir's getting a lot of calls, so am I.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we're just keep pushing them to keep pushing forward and, and to be done as, you know, and out of there with, with a good quality product too at the same time.
Any further discussion on, on streets or Alps? Mr. Shamir?
Just as a follow-up to the Brunswick activity, we're also, I know that you guys did a great job, uh, filling some of the potholes, but we still have quite a few potholes that are fairly large.
Yeah.
And I was wondering when that was going to be dealt with?
Uh, we had some equipment, um, maintenance and upkeep that we had to do, so they're going to be back out there this week again.
Thank you.
Um, working through, uh, west winds and trade winds first, and then through other areas.
Bound to you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Alaskovik?
Uh, that's it for this evening.
Okay, very good. We're going to move on now to standing. Yes, sir?
I have a question for Mr. Liskovit that isn't related to what he reported on.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I was at the concert at the park last evening, and I had, uh, resident talked to me afterwards in regards to some of the trees there, especially the ones hanging over the, uh, walkway, uh, by the, uh, gazebo, the front gazebo. If you could take a look at those and see if there's something you may be able to do, a lot of dead branches within those trees, especially the one by the, uh, walking path there.
Sure.
So, if you could take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Okay, at this point, we're going to move on now to standing committees. And the first one is Building and Utilities. Um, Ms. Gentry is not here. Is anybody else on the committee that wants to take it on as a topic? Mr. Shamir?
Nothing to report. We just have the, the third reading of the, the ordinance for, uh, demolitions coming up. That's it.
And also contractors.
Contractors as well, yes.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Shamir on this? Okay, Mr. Shamir, we're going to keep you there. We're going to take you on with the Communications, Environmental, and Recreational Programming.
Okay, uh, the next CERP meeting is going to be Monday, August twenty-fifth at six P.M. Uh, also, uh, there was a deer survey result which was published earlier today, and that result will be available shortly. I would recommend that, uh, council people also have a look at it and, and make their comments. Uh, also, the next, uh, EAB meeting will be September, uh, fourth. And, uh, during that meeting, we will be selecting a chair and a vice chair, uh, for EAB. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shamir, I haven't looked at the report yet, and I, my question is, does it include the pickups from the police department and the, the, the results in the police department, the pickups from the public service department?
It is only the survey that was conducted by.
It was the survey?
Yes, this was the survey. So, I've sent, uh, a few questions back out since, uh, since receiving. So, we will try to hopefully culminate that result and get a correlation.
Okay. So, the public is aware there's three parts to this. One has to do with the report from the United States Department of Agriculture. Um, one has to do with the survey, and the third one has to do with the reports from public service working with the, uh, police department as to the accidents that were recorded and reported. Um, so somebody could have an accident, a hit with a deer, and, and not call it in. Um, so these are only the reported ones. Any further discussion? Thank you. Um, the next one is, is Mr. Arnold's, which is Economic Development. Anyone want to speak to that topic? Okay, we're going to move on then to Finance. Mr. Zuber?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Finance Committee met, met last week prior to the council meeting, uh, that was the seventh. We had several items on the agenda. The first item we talked about was, uh, the increasing of the license plate fee. We looked at some different numbers on the increase and the amount of money it would generate. The Finance Director's going to come back with, uh, some more numbers as far as what type of borrowing we may be able to do in regards to the different five-dollar increments where we could increase that fee. Uh, we talked a little bit about the Audit Committee or Audit Commission. And I think I would probably talk to Mrs. Fenderbosh a little bit more about that to get some feedback from her on, and I think the administration's going to be looking into it too, on, on that, to, uh, see what they want to do or how they want to try and fashion an update to the Audit Committee. We talked about the Fire Department. We talked about the fire department, replacement vehicle. There is a memo on everybody's desk that talks about that. Budget adjustments. We talked a little bit about budget adjustments. There will be one on August 25th. Mrs. Fenderbosch agreed to sponsor that because I have a family obligation that day. And I'm sure there'll, it'll be discussion before, before the meeting too, at the collective committee meeting prior. We went over the June financials. There was nothing really outstanding from the Finance Director on those. We talked about the cost of the gate at Canford Boulevard. The mayor went over some different costs for that. And the only other thing that I have is the income tax collection as of the ones that we received on the 1st of July. Our income tax collections are up about 5.5% over last year. It's about $617,000 ahead of last year. So we're actually doing a little bit better than we thought we were. Our next meeting is going to be on September 2nd at 6 o'clock, or maybe even 6:30, depending on how many agenda items we have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Suber? Okay, then we're going to move along to Mr. Smith with Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. Human Resources met earlier this evening at 6 o'clock. We went over the Human Resources Director's report. Couple of things of note in there is that the, they're getting close to a city engineer being selected, that they had 52 applicants and that they picked five of the 52 applicants for the first round of interview. They're down to two and they have two interviews scheduled in the next week. Also, there were appointments to the Public Works interim Assistant Director, Public Works Assistant Director and Public Works Supervisor. The other, the other directors and the like, I think we're all aware of already, but it's in her report. Additionally, there's a Civil Service Rule 14 amendment that has been recommended relative basically to lateral hires in the police department that has been through civil service. There's been some recommendations to make very minor adjustments to it. And at the Human Resources Committee meeting, we decided we would move that to the CCM on August 25th. And, and then on to the regular agenda that day to make that changes as there are positions that need to be filled. So we will be asking for a suspension of the rule and to consider an emergency to keep the police forces at full capacity. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith? Saying none, we're going to move on now to Mr. Koz with Public Safety and Health.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no formal report, but I have one item that's on the agenda tonight that I'm going to be seeking the suspension of the rules and emergency passage on. And that's ordinance number 25-132, which is the one-day liquor license for the beer fest that's going to be held at Miller Road Park on 8/23/25. Last week at the CCM, we had Aaron Schaefer, who's now the, the head of the Avon Lake Boosters, came in and made a short presentation about this year's event and opened herself up to questions from council and the administration. There were no concerns from the Avon Lake Police Department or City Council with regards to this. This is a yearly event that I believe it's on its sixth or seventh year. There's never been any, any issues with this event. And I'm going to be asking for suspension of the rule and passage. And the reason for that is they need to get this passed and get that liquor license in place because the event is next month. And we're going to be on recess, so time is of the essence of that. The other thing that I have is the next scheduled meeting of the Public Safety and Health Committee. I have tentatively scheduled for, which would be our normal meeting date, which is the 3rd Tuesday of each month. That would be August the 19th at 5:30. However, that is still during the council recess. So I will circulate comments from members. If that is something that members aren't going to be able to do, then obviously then we'll move that and find a better date. I don't want to step on anything that's during the recess. But the next available one would be the 3rd week in September. So we'll see how that plays out, but that's the next scheduled date and we'll move it if we have to. I don't have any issues with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Koz? Saying none, thank you. We're going to move on now to Public Service, which I chair. So Public Service, the next meeting is going to be September the 3rd. On tonight's agenda, there are three items, two of which I'm going to be asking for suspension of the rule. And I wanted to talk about those now. The first one has to do with a submerged land lease. And the reason why it's going with suspension of the rule is so that we can prevent further erosion from occurring into Lake Erie at this particular address. The second one has to do with the rebid of Walker Road Phase 5. And the reason why it's going for suspension of the rule is for safe travel. And this is a rebid, the first time it came before us, the bids came in higher than the 20% that the Ohio Revised Code allows us to approve. This time, they're within that, in fact, is they're 7% higher than what the estimate was from the engineer. If we don't pass this through suspension of the rule this time at this date today, then the company that stated that they were giving us a bid, both companies will be withdrawing and we will also lose our state funding. So we're between a rock and a hard spot, as my grandkids would say. Those are the two items that I wanted to talk about with Public Service. Do they have any questions on those? Okay, if not, then we will move along now to the Planning Commission. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning Commission met on July 1st. There were three items that they considered that evening. They were the Polte Homes Major Subdivision Preliminary Plan for Approval of Harbor Crest Townhomes. That matter was tabled 7 to 0 for revised entry layout to Avon-Beldon Road, addressing alignment, spacing and left turn lane options. Some clarification on the status and treatment of a southern stub street, including homeowner access considerations. And three, confirmation that the revised plans will be reviewed by the Development Review Committee in-house before resubmission. So there were some, some very serious questions about particularly the, the access at Avon-Beldon. The other item, and, and that was tabled 7 to 0 vote, other business was a proposed right-of-way easement for Anthony and Kimberly Calabrese Manor, which I abstained on at the time at Mr. Ebert's direction, which has now been changed. I would ask council, if anybody on council does think I have a conflict, please make a motion so, to such extent at the appropriate time. That was approved 6 to 0 at the time. And there was a proposed right-of-way vacation for Chills Avenue and Electric Boulevard, which was for the Utilities Department for their, their building coming up. And they, I had advised council at the CCM that I would let you know in the event that they wanted a suspension of the rules or needed it for any, for the purposes as allowed by Revised Code. And they indicated they did not, so we'll just have that as a first reading tonight.
Very good, sir.
And Mrs. Fenderbosch is, is, uh, the sponsor for the legislation for Mr. Mrs. Calabrese.
You could actually sponsor it again, since there's no conflict, unless you prefer that I sponsor it.
I prefer for you to do it, just in case there's a motion.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any questions on Planning Commission? We're going to move along now to zoning board. Mr. Mayor?
There was a meeting on June 25th. A detached carport was approved for Norman. The next meeting is Wednesday, July 23rd at 7:00 PM here in the chambers.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor on zoning? All right, now we're going to move on to Mr. Shamir with Parks and Recreation Commission.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Any further special committee meetings? I have a report from the Tree Commission. The next meeting of the Tree Commission is going to be August the 13th at 6:00 PM at the old firehouse. I know it's during the recess they're going to be meeting because there is a grant that is due the end of the month. It is through the Division of Forestry. The funds have been given forward to the state of Ohio from the federal government. And during the process of preparing for that grant, some information came forward that I'd like to share with everyone at this time. It was discovered that some of the benefits of the trees in Avon Lake is that the trees lower air temperature and absorb water while impervious areas do the opposite. Tree shade in area, and these are public trees only at this point, tree shade in area equal to 1,273 professional football fields. The land area covered by impervious surfaces, typically buildings and pavement, is like a 3.4 square mile parking lot. Further benefits for Avon Lake, and this would be for all the trees that are in Avon Lake. They suspend your carbon as wood in trees counteracts the CO2 emissions of 1,060 gasoline-powered passenger cars. Next, the filtration removal of air pollution by the leaves of trees is estimated to reduce acute respiratory symptoms and exasperated asthma by 30 incidents. This also prevents the loss of poor school days. Next, rainfall absorbed by tree roots and therefore kept out of storm sewers is equal to 29 Olympic-sized pools. And this information came from the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service Research. Additional information for all of Avon Lake. The tree canopy in Avon Lake, presently the existing canopy covers 1,683 acres. The plantable space that's still left in Avon Lake is 3,237 acres. If you just increase this 1,683 acres by 10%, okay, the following will take place. It will add an additional storage of 6,966 tons of carbon, 1,918,840 more gallons of avoided stormwater runoff and the removal of an extra 10,200 pounds of air pollution. Now, how do we compare with other communities around us? The canopy comparison is as follows. Sheffield has a canopy coverage of 37.93%. Bay Village, 29.82%. Westlake, 28.9%. Avon, 25.83%. Sheffield Lake, 24.24%. North Ridgeville, 23.83%. Avon Lake, 23.63%. And the only two cities that are less than ours are Lorraine at 22.84% and Elia at 20.16%. I thought this was very interesting information I wanted to share at this point in time. Any further questions about the Tree Commission? Okay, at this point in time, we're then going to move on to audience participation. You speak on any topic that's on tonight's agenda for three minutes. Just come up and give us your name and the city that you're from. Thank you. Do you want to come up? Come on up. Thank you.
William Zimmerman. Beautiful Avon Lake. It's like to talk about 25-116, which is the ordinance amending the codified Charter 220. I've attended several meetings in regards to this. It's been here, talked about several times. There's an abundance of changes being made to the past. And from my standpoint, almost too many. Because it's hard to read through it all. And to stay focused and still understand what you're reading instead of turning into gibberish where it's just blah, 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 blah. But part of the reasons that I wanted to speak about this is because we feel, myself and Joe Phillips and a few others, that this is nothing more than an attempt to retaliate us because we've spoke our mind at the meetings recently. You guys haven't liked what we've had to say. So this is a way to try to corral it back in. Move the speaking time to the beginning, which now you want me to do the same job you have to do, which is read through all of the stuff that Valerie puts out at the bottom so that I can be prepared to talk about things that I'll have to sit and wait to have them come up. But I will have used my time at the beginning of the meeting. So anything that's spoken before that, I'm sorry, after that, will be useless. Because I'll have to wait to the next meeting to be able to do that. Now, at the planning meeting this past week, or two weeks ago rather, because I was out of town, Dr. Ma changed up her format. And it allowed the audience participation to be right before they were considering voting. So that if you had something prudent to say, it could actually be used by those voting. That's the way Marty used to do it when we had these kinds of meetings. He'd ask anybody from the audience and you'd be able to get up and give your three minutes. But instead, you're changing everything, taking away our ability to be informed, taking away our ability to have knowledge from the meeting and to be able to actually input before the vote. You guys all talk about, we want more audience participation. We want the public to come and we want this and we want that from everybody in the city. This is an opportunity to still do that. Instead, you're eliminating it. We still only get a handful of people that show up. I'd like to extend my time for a minute.
Does anyone object to, Mr. Suber?
I object.
Anybody else want to object?
I object.
We have five people here. Anybody else? Mr. Smith, do you object? Mr. Shamir, do you object? And I don't either. So you may have a minister.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
If you could give us just a moment?
Oh, still got to take a vote.
It's a majority. Yeah, so it's a majority. It's not a vote, it's not a vote by name. Go ahead.
So there's no vote needed to be taken?
No, it's a consensus.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So again, the fact that you want more citizens to come, I would think that you would want to make this a more enjoyable effect for people to come. Most of the people are afraid to come. They get nervous up here. They don't have anything to flow. Some people prepare, some people don't. But the point is, is that you want the input from the citizens. These are the people that put all of you in office. So why wouldn't you want more input? Because as I've indicated, I called my representatives. Nobody called back. So if I don't get an opportunity to come here and speak and in a timely fashion where it means something, it's like falling on deaf ears, like my phone call messages. I just think you need to let the citizens come and speak in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Just that I would say that I do return your calls, Mr. Zimmerman.
I'm not disputing that, Mr. Suber. I, I didn't mention that at all. You're, you're one of the few.
Would you like to come forward?
I'm a little unsure. Is, am I allowed to speak on the gate issue now?
On any topic that's on tonight's agenda.
So I know that we've mentioned earlier...
So anything else would be at the end.
Okay. So even though the gate was mentioned earlier, it's not the appropriate time now?
Correct. It's not on the agenda for a vote.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Anybody else on any topic? Okay, just so that everybody knows, we have a new paper up here in front. And Mr. Alaskovik, could you be our, our, our show and tell and just go up and pick it up and show everyone so that people at home can see what we have? One of the things that council's doing, we have multiple ways that, yeah, just hold it up so that the camera can pick it up. Okay, thank you. Just hold still. Okay, then she'll zoom in on you. We have many ways that you can get ahold of council. If something isn't answered here during a council meeting, if you, if you would put down what your topic is, who it is you want to speak to or what the issue is and how we can get ahold of you. Mrs. Rossman is going to be picking that. Mrs. Rossmarin is going to be picking that paper up at the, thank you very much, sir. Mrs. Rossmarin is going to be picking the paper up at the end of each meeting. She will then contact the staff person or the council person so that you can have your answers to your, to your topic, you can speak further on it, because there's many ways to communicate with council. Okay, moving right along, we're going to go down now to legislation. Are there any additions or deletions from our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we're going to move on out of third readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, by title only, read ordinance number 25-112.
An ordinance enacting codified ordinance chapter 1470, demolition.
Thank you. Mr. Shamir?
Yes, I move for passage of ordinance number 25-112.
In discussion?
The ordinance establishes a uniform and comprehensive process for the safe and environmentally responsible demolition of buildings and structures within Avon Lake City Limits.
Any further discussion from anyone? Yes, sir, Mr. Cos.
Yeah, thank you. It's too bad that Ms. Gentry isn't here tonight because she worked tirelessly, tirelessly on this, and I want to congratulate her on this. This is like her first big legislative win, and that's what it is, it's a win. And I just want to congratulate her committee as well, too. You guys worked really hard on this, and I'm glad that it's gotten to the point that it is now. So it's something to be proud of from that committee, and I congratulate Amy. And like I said, I wish she was here, but I'll tell her that also when, when she gets back, so it was a nice job by them. Thank you.
Anybody else? I, I agree. Yes, Mr. Shamir, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to second that. I mean, she has worked tirelessly since the beginning, so it's been months, and, and she has, she has carried this through, and, and I do congratulate her as well.
Right. And then I'm going to follow up on that. So it's not just an ordinance for Avon Lake that, that she looked at, which is, is going to end up benefiting Avon Lake. She would have added from all different angles so that truly, in our region, this is, this is the best of the best of what's out there for demolition. And she contacted people from the state of Ohio, she contacted other communities, she contacted the county, she worked very closely with Mr. Ebert and his staff, multiple times they met. And when you're a new council person, it's very hard sometimes to, to work through a process, and she has carried it out to the very end. Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with you as well. I know that she absolutely worked very hard on it, got frustrated very often working through it as well, and I, I do wish she was here to hear the congratulatory remarks that everybody's made. Thank you.
And if you're watching, Amy, we, we love you, and you did a great job here. Mr. Shamir? Anything else to close this out?
Nothing else, thank you.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the vote?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
This has passed, thank you. We move on now to ordinance number 25-113. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance section, chapter 1438, licensing of contractors defined, section 1438.01, contractor defined, and codified ordinance, chapter 1468, unsafe buildings.
Mr. Shamir?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25-113.
In discussion?
This is a ordinance for contractors and safe buildings that Ms. Gentry has tirelessly worked on as well.
Right, with the staff in the building department, absolutely. Anybody else? Any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. We move on now to ordinance number 25-116. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance amending codified ordinance, chapter 220, council.
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-116. And in discussion, this is the chapter 220 that basically is the bylaws of council and how we do business. And I'm going to read through what the changes are. Regular meetings, what we have done is that we have updated the language so that it says "meeting shall be," "August meeting shall be," et cetera, et cetera. There aren't huge changes there. Where the change is, is that we have documented what actually takes place. It says, "A written record of the items covered and discussed at the meeting shall be kept by the clerk of council." That already takes place, we just wanted to put it into our ordinance. Special meetings, again, it says, "Members of council, members of council shall." We work all the way down to number three, it says, "A written record of the items covered and discussed at the meeting shall be kept by the clerk of council." Then we move on to the collective committee meetings. And again, it was simply English language to clean, to clean it up, there weren't any changes, major changes. We work down to the work sessions, and the same. The executive session, the change is, it says, "Persons who are not members of council may only attend if invited by a member of council. Information discussed at executive sessions shall not be disclosed without consent of council." And this is just part of following through with the Ohio revise code. Coram, it goes down to specifically state, "No member of council or the mayor, the law director, the finance director, and/or the public works director therefore shall leave the council chamber or its immediate environs without the general consent of the members of council as provided in 220.20, subject to censure at council, at members of councils discretion." And then we move over to the council president, and this part had some changes in it, and it's because we wanted to be in compliance with the Board of Elections. The way it was before, council presidents were making decisions before the votes were actually certified by the Board of Elections, and there could be a change if someone was not certified, right? So we did change those, those dates. So it says, "Council president not later than seven days after the certification of general election results by the Board of Elections. Presiding council president shall convene a meeting of the council elect. The sole purpose of this meeting shall be to elect the council president and president pro tempore for the new upcoming term." Then you go to standing committees. Again, the timetable was changed so we could be in compliance with the Board of Elections. And instead of having it be 21 days, it's within 19 days following the council's election, the council elects shall meet, again, to discuss their committee assignments. There is a renumbering, that's simply a formatting issue. We go down to the Chair of Buildings and Utilities Committee, because there's been a change to that committee's name. There's also been a change to Communications, Environmental, and Recreational Programming Committee. We want to make sure that they had Communications and Technology Department there versus the old name that was Digital Medium. You turn the page, we're over to the Economic Development Committee, and again, instead of calling it the Economic Development Department, it's called Community Development Department. So that's been updated. The Finance Committee, they had, we had the wrong chapter listed there. It says, "As provided in chapter 270." We go down to the Human Resources Committee, and it says, "The committee shall include among its members the chairpersons of finance and public safety and health committees," because we used to call it the Safety Committee. We've changed the name to Public Safety and Health. Then you go down to Public Service Committee, and we have titled the different paragraphs so it's easy to find what you're looking for instead of, you know, going through all the words. So for example, the first paragraph has to do with referrals to committee. The next paragraph has to do with oversight of right-of-way infrastructure. The next one has to do with oversight of public services and facilities. Then we go on to the Department Review, Property Review, and the Arts and Humanities Infrastructure Facilities. The committee shall be responsible for matters related to the arts and humanities as they pertain to infrastructure and city facilities. Then we go on to committee meetings. And underneath the committee meetings, we talk about the agenda, and instead of just saying council, we say members of council. So there's just some grammatical changes that have taken place there. We're going to go down to the Order of Business at a Council Meeting, and we go through the order that, that we have, that you know of, and we come down to Excuseal of Absences, the Dispensation of Reading and Approval of Minutes. We go down to, "No present member of council objects to dispensing within the reading." We go down to the Legislation Required for the Appointment to Office, Administration of Oaths of Office, Issuance of Ceremonial Proclamations to be Enacted. You all see us here with the police and the fire, you know we do this, and, but it never was put into our code. And then we come down to Public Input, and we've had a lot of comments from the public who have to wait to the very end before they speak on any topic. That happened again this evening. And by putting it at the very beginning of the meeting, extending it from three minutes to five minutes on any topic, whether it's on the agenda or not, we thought that we were helping the public in this way to move things along. And throughout our meeting, if there's a topic that comes up at the beginning of the meeting, members of council and the staff can address those items. So Public Input, this is the change. Each member of the audience wishing to speak should be permitted to speak only once for up to five minutes on any topic. Additional time not to exceed five additional minutes may be granted by a two-thirds voted members of council present. Every speaker shall address the presiding officer and refrain from personal attacks in decorous language and becoming boisterous. You saw there wasn't a vote tonight, there was by consent, because this hasn't gone into effect yet, so we're going by the old rules. Then we go down to Unfinished Business, then we go over to the Rules of the Floor, and again, it says the very, the very same things. The Rules of the Floor, recognition and decorum, the next topic of the next cent, of area is interruption points of order, the next topic is privilege of the sponsor, the next topic is record of debate. But by labeling each of those paragraphs, it makes it much easier to find what you're looking for. We turn the page, we go to the Order of Precedents of Motions, and basically it's just grammatical changes that are in there. We've added members of council versus just saying council. And you turn the page again, and we come over to Voting, we come over to General Consent, and it reads, "When there is evidently no opposition to a particular question, the formality of a vote may be waived in such cases by presiding officer, and they shall state, if there is no objection, followed by clear statement of the proposed action of the member of council. If anybody voices an objection, the action shall be considered, if there is no objection, the action shall be considered as approved by general consent, and no formal vote will be required." Then we go over to regular council meetings about public input, and what we did that's different is that every single meeting has the exact same language in it so that each meeting is treated the same, whether it is a regular meeting, a CCM, if you have a work And what we have added to all of these is one sentence. We've added, if you go through all of them, it's all the same, the sentence that we've added is, "Consultants to council and invited guests may present information and may be called upon to respond to questions from members of council, the administration or city staff at any point during a meeting at the discretion of the presiding officer." Then we go over to Parliamentary Authority, and it says, "Roberts Rules of Order Newly Revised May Govern the Proceedings of Council, except where the charter or council's adopted written policies and rules clearly render them inapplicable. The presiding officers shall adhere to the rules contained in this chapter and other policies and rules formerly adopted by council prior to the meeting of the public body." Then we talk about suspension of the rules again, it's, it's a grammatical changes that we've added. And that is the end. Is there anybody else that wants to have any input? Yes, Mr. Cos?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam President. First, I want to thank you for steering us through this and getting us to this point. I believe that this, we started looking at this, I could be wrong, but I think it was back in February, and it was a lot of extras.
Actually, it was last year.
Oh, was it? Okay. It's longer than I thought then. It, it's, it's been a very thorough process, and we had a, we had a number of evening meetings of council where all we did was just discuss this and just an open conversation and discussing on revisions and working with the, with the law director to put together the document that we have for us right now, which is on a third reading and no emergency, so it'll go into effect, it'll be in effect when we return from recess. So you did a lot of work helping getting us to this point. There was a lot of discussion, there were disagreements amongst members of council, but we've worked through it and we've come up with this, with, with this document that I think we all can support. One thing I do want to mention that was mentioned earlier, there was a comment made that Mr. O'Donnell used to allow comments right before votes. That has never happened in this city that I'm aware of. I think what he was referring to was collective committee meetings, and after each topic, Mr. O'Donnell would give five minutes to any resident on each topic. But prior to a vote, there's never been comments prior to a vote, so I wanted to make that clear. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was, and you said it pretty good, that the public speaking part is moving the comments to the front of the meeting and allowing residents to bring up any topic that they want. We've had residents here that have attended meetings that have to sit through an hour, hour and a half, two hours plus to make a simple comment or ask a question or whatever it might be. This eliminates that. This allows everybody at the front of the meeting to get everything out, ask all your, get all your points out about anything either on the agenda or not on the agenda, and then council can then conduct their business. So I think this is a good document, and I'm, I'm happy that we're moving forward on this tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. When it comes to communication with council, I think that we are all available to people who want to discuss matters with us. We have emails, we have telephone numbers. It doesn't just have to be in this setting. If someone doesn't like public speaking, or I don't know of anyone who doesn't feel the need, they will pick up the phone and contact somebody, and their calls will be returned. I just, you know, and when it comes to the ability of people to talk at the beginning of meetings, I think it's much better, better that way. I also have seen other cities where sometimes there's not even any public discussion at all. So I think we're, we're doing a good job, and we're trying to keep the citizenry, citizenry informed, hear them. We do the best we can to do all of those above in many, many, many very different forms of communication. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no further discussion on this, then Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. And as Mr. Cos said, it will go into effect in 30 days because there's no emergency clause on it. Now we're down to the first readings. Mrs. Rossmarin, if you could read by title only, ordinance number 25-132.
An ordinance allowing beer, wine, and hard seltzer-type beverages to be sold, served, dispensed, and consumed at a one-day beer fest to be held at Miller Road Park on August 23rd, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cos?
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Cos?
Thank you. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-132.
In discussion?
Yeah, in discussion. As I mentioned in my report earlier and also at the collective committee meeting, this is a one-day liquor license permit which is required for the Avon Lake Boosters to hold their annual beer fest at Miller Road Park. The event will be on August 23rd there at Miller Road Park. This has been reviewed by the administration and the Police Department, and they had no objections to this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. We're going to move on to resolution number 25-133. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
A resolution approving the use of submerged lands at 31954 Lake Road and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings, Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. I move for passage of resolution number 25-133. In discussion, a resident at 31954 Lake Road has requested permission to construct the proposed shore structure. And the application, within the application process to lease submerged lands, the parties must submit to the city of Avon Lake, requesting that a resolution be approved. This is part of the process through the Ohio revise code. be approved. This is part of the process through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And the City of Avon Lake needs to work with their city engineer and also with the Public Works Director to see if there's any need that they might think there might be in the future for operation, maintenance, construction by the municipal city of breakwaters, piers, docks, wharves, and on and on. And it has been determined that there is no need. It was found that this is something that could be declared as a submerged land lease, and the resolution is declared to be an emergency measure. The emergency, as I had said earlier, being the necessity of the property owner to begin the approval process to immediately secure materials to begin the erosion control project to protect the lake shoreline, thus for the public health, safety, and welfare of all of us. Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
It has passed. Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only, ordinance number 25-134.
An ordinance amended Chapter 1018 Municipal Tree Ordinance and codified ordinance Section 1065.99 Enforcement and Penalty.
Thank you. This is only the first reading. This will be going three readings, and the intent is to take it into the autumn. As I have said in the past, the Arbor Foundation tasked every city in reviewing in January their municipal tree ordinances. And this particular group of ordinances has been worked on since January of 2024. So, it's been over a year that they have been working on it. And the changes that have come up have also been reviewed with the law department. You're going to see many ordinances change the word municipal to city since that's the new way of doing it. And there have been some definitions added to this ordinance. For example, an arborist. What is an arborist? It's one who by possession of a recognized degree, certificate, or professional standing, or by extensive knowledge, training, and experience, has demonstrated the ability to deal with the subject matter. They have also brought up critical root zone, diameter breast height. That's the height that you measure a tree circumference from. The International Society of Arbiculture, that's a professional organization that governs the accreditation of tree care professionals. The Master Tree Plan, which the city has already passed. They have a definition for it. What is a protected tree? What does it mean to remove? I know it sounds silly, but there's actually, remove and removal has to be defined. Street Tree Program. We cannot top trees. The Tree Maintenance, Tree Preservation Plan, Tree Selection, Tree Survey. And then it goes down to defining what the duties of the urban forester are. And it goes off, and it talks about the Master Tree Plan, which I said we had brought here before. And the main thing that's to be taken away from this area is that the standards that the Division of Forestry has set up along with ANSI 300, along with ISA, are the standards that we're using here in Avon Lake. Then we go down to the area of planting of trees, shrubs, and hedges, and that a permit needs to be required. And then we go on to the replacement of trees. And we talk about the pruning of trees. And in the pruning area, which I mentioned at the CCM, you're going to hear me mention it every time because I want to make sure the residents understand, between April 1st and December 1st, unless it is an emergency, do not have your oak trees or your chestnut trees pruned. And the reason is, we want to prevent the spread of oak wilt, which is already in Ward 1. We've seen it in the 45 area. We talk about the abuse and mutilation of public trees. Thankfully, we don't see much of that in Avon Lake, but it needs to be in the ordinance according to the State of Ohio. We talk about protected trees that are on public land and how the trees will be protected during construction. We talk about the enforcement and the penalty. And this is something that took a lot of discussion between the law department and the tree commission. There is a discussion about whoever violates, whoever violates any of the provisions of this chapter is guilty of a minor misdemeanor. And in the olden days, it said, "shall be fined $100." Now, it's to say, "shall be fined up to three times the market rate value of the former tree and $1,000 for each offense." And that's taken right from a 1974 Ohio Revised Code rule. It's been around since 1974, and we're just now bringing it up to date. And that is basically it. So, I'm open for any discussion. It will be brought up for two more CCMs and two more readings. Seeing none, then we're going to move on. Thank you. Ordinance number 25-135. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation for portions of the Electric Boulevard right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
It has passed. I move for passage of ordinance number 25-135. And my papers have just moved, and I don't know where they are. Oh, here they are. Okay. Anthony Calabrese and Kimberly Calabrese petitioned the city for a vacation of portions of Electric Boulevard right-of-way adjacent to properties owned by them and Smugglers Cove condominium complex number four. So, when you're coming off of Miller Road and you're churning west on Electric, this is clear at the end, Mr. Calabrese and Mrs. Calabrese have purchased the land that was going to be a, was proposed to be a parking lot for the animal clinic, and they want to include the dead end. So, they're asking for vacation. So, they would receive part of it, and Smugglers Cove would be receiving part of it. The ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure. The emergency is to allow the city to finalize a contract for the sale of property. Are there any questions on this? Any discussion items? Seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Okay, ordinance number 136. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation for a portion of the Shields Avenue and Electric Boulevard rights of way and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 25-136. It's a vacation for property that the utility department owns on either sides of Shields and Electric Boulevard.
Any discussion for Mr. Smith on this particular topic? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We're going to move on now to the final one, which is ordinance number 25-137. Mrs. Rossmarin, read by title only.
An ordinance awarding a contract for the Walker Road paving project, Phase 5, and declaring an emergency.
I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rossmarin.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. I move for passage of ordinance number 137. In discussion, in accordance with the direction of council, the city engineer has prepared plans and specifications for the Walker Road paving project, Phase 5. As provided by law, inviting bids for construction and improvements, the bids have been received. They've been opened. They've been tabulated. And it was determined that the bid submitted by Gerken, that's G-E-R-K-E-N, Paving Inc., doing business as Precision Paving Inc. of Mylan, Ohio, is the lowest and best responsive bid for the total amount of $2,089,376.85. And this section of it is a base bid along with $150,000 of contingencies for items that might come up, along with alternate bid number one, which is $72,179. I want it to be stated that the engineer's estimate was $1,934,858.20 for the base bid and contingency, and that the add alternate bid one was estimated to be $69,629.40. This is 8% increase, which is within the 20% of the Ohio Revised Code permits for us. They're looking at a November 7 completion date. And what I also want to state that I think is very important, and Mrs. Shamir, you will like this, council received the breakdown of all the items that were bid upon. And within this bid, not only was it the roadway on Walker Road and the section on more, this just south of Walker Road, that was not completed with the last project, but it was also sidewalks and the sidewalk repair and the driveway repair like at Avondale, and traffic control. And this is what we're all going to be happy about. So, the traffic is only going to be going westward, okay, so that there won't be any conflicting traffic back and forth. It's much safer that way. And the sanitary manhole, it's going to be taken care of. The storm sewer is going to be taken care of. The water valves are going to be addressed. But maintaining traffic, and this is what Mr. Shamir and I are really excited about, they're going to have not only portable message signs, they're going to have detour signs. It's going to be law enforcement there. This has all been included within the bid. Of course, it's going to be sediment control, which we're always on top of, all of us up here, wanting to protect the stormwater. And there's going to be a detector loop put in underneath the pavement so that when traffic is stacked up, it will help the control of the light, which the residents are going to approve of. Is there any additional discussion on this one? Mr. Cause, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And can you talk to about notification before this begins?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. So, the residents are going to be notified along with the major corporations that are over there. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Mayor and to Mr. Liskovic because they were, Aviant and the others were already included in early discussions. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. That is correct. So, when we first put this out to bid, or prior to first putting it out to bid, I contacted Aviant and spoke with them, made them aware of the one-way plan as well as the work that's going to be done. They took it back to their corporate, and they also took it back to the other companies that are within that same complex back there. They're all aware of it. Nobody has an objection. They look forward to the improvements in that area. And we'll be getting that information out again, not only to them again, but also to the residents affected in that area.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good point, Mr. Cause. Thank you. All right, seeing none. Mrs. Rossmarin, it's time for the roll.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cause?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. This is long time and coming. People will be happy with this one. Now, it's time for public input on any topic that you might want to speak on for five minutes. Come on up, sir.
Hello, Vince Canonico, Avon Lake. Earlier today, we were provided with some emails from other residents who expressed concern about the proposed gate. And I took some time, and I skimmed through them. And I think the concerns expressed are legitimate concerns. Obviously, I believe that there are counter concerns that support a gate. But one, I want to read part of one of them. I'm not going to identify the person because I don't know if she's here to rebut my arguments. I don't think it's fair for me to read her name. But I just want to read part of it and then comment. Prior to our street, Parkside Drive, being connected to the Hunt Club development in 2021, many of us expressed concerns about increased traffic and requested a gate to limit access. Were repeatedly told that this was not an option due to public safety concerns. Since then, traffic on our street has increased significantly, and our concerns about traffic and speeding continue to be dismissed. So, what this writer is asking, what she's saying is that you made a mistake in not giving them the gate that they wanted and they needed, okay? And she's confirming that it's still having a negative impact on their community. And what she's saying is, she's not saying, "You made a mistake. Don't make the same mistake at Kern Village." She's saying, "Fair's fair. You got to make the same mistake again." Don't do that. Learn from your mistakes, okay? If your decision here caused a problem for these people because of increased traffic and speeding, which is what she has confirmed after, what, four years of observation, don't make the same mistake again, all right? You have concerns from your members about traffic, all right, and about safety. And you have a large development that's coming next door that already has six or seven means of ingress and egress. You don't need one more. It's just clear as day here that this person, this resident, has confirmed that you made a mistake in the same fashion in 2021. Why do it again? That's my point. Mr. Cause, I think, said in the meeting, last meeting or the meeting before last, "Pulte's agreed to pay for a part of a gate." You know, let's use their money. Let's put it up, okay? Even if it's a temporary gate, a temporary solution. Why don't we do that? It won't cost the city a thing. Pulte's willing to pay for it. Let's do it. Now, in addition, I attended earlier this week, or excuse me, when was it? Late last week, right? Yeah, the trans-system meeting, okay? And really, what, I just kind of, I didn't ask any questions. I kind of sat back and tried to figure out what I was seeing. And what was clear is, okay, there's a lot of questions about the data they collected and whether they did that appropriately. And I think that there are legitimate questions about that. But more troubling to me is the data they're not collecting, all right? Mr. Shamir asked them, "Are you considering the combination of the new school on Lear?" No, they had no data about it. One of my neighbors asked, "Are you considering the expansion of the Cleveland Clinic and how that will impact traffic on Lear?" No, was the answer, all right? So, they're collecting incomplete data, and they're making wild assumptions about the limited information that they have. So, I'm very troubled by the trans-system approach. I don't know, I can't offer you any answers to that, but I think that the information that you get will not be sufficient to support any reasonable decision-making. I mean, sometimes bad data is worse than no data at all. It's just going to lead you in the wrong direction. Again, I just suggest that you don't repeat the mistake that you made on Parkside Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would I come up? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. Ken Yankel. I'm over on Gusu Drive, okay? Also, I just became aware because of President Fenderbosh's notice about the emails that were sent. And he wrote up, mentioned the addresses which they came from.
The streets.
The street addresses, is what I mean, yes. Not the individual streets. I noted that there's only a few of them were in the area that was south of Walker and east of Lear. Very, very few of the ones you mentioned were. Most of them were from Westwoods. Now, the reason why the people of Westwoods are concerned is because they've already recognized that it's going to be a major cut-through for them, and a very, very opportune cut-through for them. They want to be able to take advantage of it. So, I can understand that naturally. But they're not the ones going to suffer the impact, okay, of all those cars from the Wall Street and from Westwoods cutting through the new cut-through that's going to be created, okay, down Bridge Side and down Treeside to Millside and then straight out Hanford, all right? So, I'm just trying to echo the same things that Vince just echoed, you know, that these are, these people will benefit, but they're not going to share in- but they're not going to share in the downside, okay, of it because their, their traffic's not going to be increased. Ours is. And so please take that into consideration. And the other thing is, going back, I think we, on that meeting we had last Monday, I mentioned Mr. Mayor concerning, have you got a date yet? We're going to--
I would have to ask Mr. Liskovic. I don't think we have a date yet. We're still gathering additional--
For the gate?
Yeah, I'm still waiting on some other contractor data.
Yeah, but you have a general idea as to when we might have a resolution to a date?
I can tell you, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Good evening. Paul Orlovsky, Hanford Boulevard. Mr. Cos had a great suggestion at the last meeting. And I had some communications this afternoon. The mayor sent me an email. And once again, this idea of a chain is mentioned. And Vince has made the point in his practice of law, it's a bad idea. And I don't know how that's even still on the table, the chain. But it was, it was in the email today. Mr. Cos's suggestion to get, to get moving is a very, very good one. I threw the chair. I don't want to lecture anybody living to our east, but they're going to get more traffic too because people from Bay Village and are going to cut through their streets. So if they think that this cut through is just going to affect us, they're dead wrong. Come all the way from the Bay Village border and maybe even in Bay Village to get over to Lear Road. That's, that's basically about it. The cost of these gates, I think, hearing $100,000 at a couple of meetings ago. You can go online, can't find one for $100,000. Beautiful brick things with all kinds of controls. All the city vehicles have the revolts to make the thing click and to go up, you know? So there's no safety concerns. But that's really, that's about it. I just, a lot of people are going to suffer, not just Hanford Boulevard and Kern Village. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi. Debbie Yu, Avon Lake. 90 days have now passed since the Hanford connect, Boulevard has been connected. As demonstrated in my, in my exhibit that I introduced at the May 27, 2025 council meeting, that that connection was, occurred on April 15 of 2025. Pursuant to the MOU passed by this council on October 15 of 2024, under ordinance 24-158, the gate, the city was to have installed the gate within 30 days of that connection. And so at the, at the maximum, that gate was to have been installed by the city by May 15 of 2025. Over 60 days have passed, and that gate has not, has not been installed. And I do remind you that paragraph three of the MOU indicates that the city shall be responsible for the installation of the gate. Now, at the last CCM meeting, the mayor had indicated that he received some, some costs for the gate and different options. And there were options provided, including, I believe it was a manual gate for $7,500, which is well within the amount that Polte has already agreed to pay. Polte, under the MOU, has agreed to pay $15,000. So this is not at cost to the city. This is at Polte's cost. And that's still, that has not been done. So I urge this council to please comply with the MOU and to install the agreed-upon gate. This was agreed upon nine months ago by this council under ordinance 24-158. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any topic?
William Zimmerman. I'd like to play a video before I begin.
No, sir.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank Mr. Lickowitz. I probably butchered that, but anyhow, he was kind enough to watch my video that I wanted to play and saw that there was an area in our city that was unsafe because there were trees blocking a stop sign, being able to be viewed. And the other road that was bisecting it didn't have stop signs. So they're moving traffic quickly. And so if you didn't know the stop sign was there, you're going to run right out into the traffic. His department worked quickly to remove the limbs and everything and made it now viewable. I thank you again for your time. So let's go on to other matters. Beautiful halls of corruption in Avon Lake. You know, we've had to refile in the Ohio State Supreme Court our brief. Gerald Phillips has been very, very ill. And we asked for an extension of time. Supreme Court granted us 10 extra days. He had asked for 20. Had attempted to contact Mr. Ebert several, several times. Our law director is a piece of shit. He has no right to not return emails and phone calls to give the gentleman who's almost ready to die an opportunity to be able to still fulfill our requirements. We worked diligently and got it done, regardless of the fact. Man has no integrity. If your friend was dying, would you want to give him 10 extra days to do some work? He may not die. I don't believe he will now. Surgery's been successful. But that shows the kind of person we have, help running our city. Mr. Specksel and Mr. Ebert have been thick as thieves since their days in Bay Village. They brought their act to Avon Lake. I find that appalling. They know how hard it is to remove people from office. Putting out petitions and stuff. I spent hours and days and weeks trying to gain enough signatures. People are complacent. They don't care. That's why we had to go a different route to remove the mayor, just waiting to hear from the appeals court. Citizens of Avon Lake need to really understand the people that are running our city are not who they say they are. They don't act with integrity. They don't find it to be important. This is why I call Mr. Cos a fraud. Because again, he started parking his car in front of his home, right in, on the side of the fire hydrant near the intersection. But he doesn't care because he's above the law. When I called the police department to make statements in regards to this fact, nobody comes to ticket it, to remove it, to do anything. So they just don't care. They figure it's better not to have to enforce the law than to worry about it. So we have an issue with Sergeant De Senzo. A sergeant, by the way. We've been, now been told is the person who altered the documents. A sergeant. But that's not my problem. My problem is, did he act alone? Was he acting in regards to the law director, the chief, the mayor? Was he told to do it? Or was he asked? I'd like another minute, please.
I think you have spoken long enough, anybody? Anybody else?
Great. I don't care if you've heard enough.
Thank you. We have, anybody here that is objecting to this to go forward? We're going to not give him another minute. Do you have a problem with that?
That was very confusing, wasn't it? Have we decided?
There's no longer a time for you. Thank you. I've heard enough tonight.
Just because you've heard enough doesn't mean that my time should be up.
Mr. Mayor, I would like for you to speak to this particular topic if you have additional information.
Regarding the--
Citation?
Yes, sir.
So the police department did an internal investigation regarding that. It was a mistake made in changing that without having the court involved in the process. It was an innocent mistake. There was no intent involved. The Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office was sent to them for review just to make sure that we were in good standing. They declined. They don't see any criminal act being participated in that. We also sent it to the Ohio Secretary of State. They reviewed it and found no issue with the notary part of that. So as far as we're concerned, it was a done deal. It's not unusual for a ticket to be changed from a city ordinance to a state ordinance or vice versa, depending on the circumstances. That was the intent here, and that was all the intent. There was no intent to do anything other than that, and it's done quite frequently. In this case, the officer didn't do it through the court system, and that was the only difference.
Thank you for taking it on to the county and also on to the state. I saw your hand, Mr. Ebert.
Yes, if I can. I did respond to Mr. Phillips by email. So as far as the extension, that was sent to Mr. Phillips on that. Normally, I would grant an extension. Every time I've had the cases involving Avon Lake with Mr. Phillips, he asks continuous extensions and extensions and extensions and extensions. I notified him that we would not agree to an extension on this particular time, and an email was sent to him. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Any miscellaneous business and announcements at this point in time? Looking to my left? Looking to my right? Seeing none? I'm going to ask for an adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin?
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a great summer. We'll see you back in August 25th. Thank you.